I'd like to call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Falls Church for Monday, September 23rd, 2013. If you'd please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everybody, and welcome. If I can have the roll call, please?
Ms. Berry?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Kalen?
Here.
Mr. Pepe?
Here.
Mr. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. Tartar?
Here.
Mayor Baruch?
Here.
Thank you, Council.
If I can get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the meeting agenda.
If I can get a second? Is Mr. Kalen on the second?
Yes.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? The ayes have it, the meeting agenda is adopted. We have two proclamations and a certificate of appreciation this evening. I've asked Vice Mayor Snyder to read the first one regarding fire prevention.
Whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas fire departments responded to more than 370,000 home fires in 2011, which killed more than 2,500 people, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States with two of every fire home fires starting in the kitchen, and whereas unattended equipment was a factor in one-third of reported cooking fires, and whereas Falls Church residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot -- here's some fire prevention advice. This is coming from the chief. Keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas and keep anything that can catch fire away from stove tops, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more likely to survive a fire, and working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in home fires in half, and whereas the City of Falls Church first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2013 Fire Prevention Week theme, Prevent Kitchen Fires, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires.
Now, I, Mayor Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, hereby proclaim the week of September 6th through the 12th as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Falls Church, and urge all citizens to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Prevention Week 2013 and throughout the year, and witness thereof, I undertake my hand and cause the seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 23rd day of September 2013. Chief? Any comments you'd like to make?
I would just like to add two comments. The two most common mistakes in the kitchen seem to be when the fire occurs, we believe it's to put water on it instead of having a fire extinguisher nearby or just putting a lid on it to make grease within the fire. And the second one being with electric stoves, smooth top surfaces, is we have a lot of folks that...
There we go. Sorry. And the second one being with smooth top surfaces, we have a lot of folks who will nationwide just use that space, that stove, as additional counter space, put things on it, and then walk away and sometimes inadvertently turn on a burner. So those are the two most common mistakes. And then the only other thing I'd like to add is Saturday, October 12th, will be the fire station open house over at the fire station. We'd like to invite all the citizens, council members, to that, and that will go from 10 to 4:00 p.m.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Just very quickly, I want to thank you for the work that you do and obviously the first responders. I think the other key point, and we make it in the proclamation, is the importance of working smoke detectors. Wouldn't you say that's about the most important thing you can do?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Chief, if you'd join us up here and receive the proclamation and also take a photo with us. The next proclamation that we have is related to Prostate Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas prostate cancer is amongst the most common yet curable cancers for men living in the United States with one of the highest survival rates of any type of cancer, whereas about one in seven men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in his lifetime, and whereas among American men prostate cancer is both the second most commonly diagnosed cancer and the second leading cause of cancer death, and whereas prostate cancer incidence and mortality rates have declined, in 2013, an estimated 239,000 men in the United States will be diagnosed with the illness, and almost 30,000 men will die from the disease. Whereas while the exact cause remains unknown, it is more common among older men and men with family histories of prostate cancer, whereas prostate cancer is especially prevalent among African-American men who experience with both high incidence and highest mortality rates of prostate cancer, and whereas prostate cancer can be detected through a simple PSA screening or doctor's exam, and whereas the American Cancer Society recommends that starting at age 50, men talk to doctors about the pros and cons of prostate cancer testing so they can decide if it's the right choice for them. Now, there, I, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, hereby proclaim September 2013 as prostate cancer awareness month in the City of Falls Church, and encourage everyone to help raise awareness, support, research, improve care, and reduce the impact of the disease on our citizens and our nation. And witness thereof, I undertake my hand and cause the seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 23rd day of September 2013.
Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I just want to express my personal appreciation to the mayor for instigating this, having the idea to bring it forward. I'm new to the disease awareness club, so it didn't occur to me that this is obviously a very important thing to do and very meaningful, of course, for me and many, many others. I want to thank the city clerk for her research and craftsmanship and drafting the proclamation, and I want to express my personal thanks to many who have reached out to me in the last week. It's a real mark of the great community we live in. I think that so many people care. When folks need a hand up, they put their hand out. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And just wanted to echo some of the comments. I appreciate that Mr. Duncan and I talked about this and ultimately made the decision to bring it forward. I know that many, many families and individuals have been touched by prostate cancer, including my own family, and others, and friends, and acquaintances, and coworkers. So, I think it's really important that we talk about these issues, and one way we can do that is through these proclamations. So, thank you, Mr. Duncan, for your sincerity and sharing what you're going through. I know it's difficult, and we wish you Godspeed and best of luck. And if I may present this to you as well. All right. The next item that we have is a certificate of appreciation for Mr. Roger Nebergall, and Vice Mayor Snyder's going to read that.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, Roger Nebergall, recording as requested.
Well, one of the great benefits of living in a small town, which in many ways Falls Church still is, is the opportunity to get to know your fellow citizens. And we, from time to time, have honored those citizens who have contributed such a great deal to our community, and so it's a real honor, I think, for all of us to recognize Roger Nebergall for the work that he's done in so many different areas. Let me just read this very quickly, and then I'll make a few additional comments and ask others to comment as well, and then we'll ask Roger to say whatever he'd like and then come on up to get the certificate. Certificate of appreciation to Roger Nebergall for dedicated volunteer service benefiting the City of Falls Church. The City Council is grateful to its many citizens who volunteer their time and service to make the City of Falls Church a better place to live, work, and play. You have served the community as a longtime member of the Falls Church Lions Club, a member of the Falls Church Advisory Board on Parks and Recreation, and president of the Friends of the W N O D Trail. Children, adults, and dogs -- guess who wrote this? Kathy. Enjoy the benefits of the W N O D Trail through the city for relaxation, health, and sport, which you have helped to support through fundraising efforts and promotion of healthy outdoor activities. And as a veteran of World War II, you have been a model of service to your country and a presenter of the oral histories from that time of conflict in our country's history. Thank you for your devotion to the City of Falls Church and the United States of America.
Thank you. My work for Walter Mess was an honor and a pleasure, not a task. Walter and I were a couple of very few people in Falls Church who've been at war, who knows what it's like for someone trying to kill you. Walter and I talked about that a great deal, but he's a great man, and he lives on forever. So I just want you to know that the things I did for Walter, and will continue to do, is an honor and a pleasure, not a task. These other things I've been doing all are enjoyable. It's a real joy to help people, and there are some people in Falls Church who accept that, some don't. But I'll continue to do what I can do, and so on and so forth, and I'm very honored that you want to recognize me. Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. And Roger, thank you for your service to the city over many, many years and to our nation as well.
Yeah.
One final point. We understand that Roger has already been called upon to brief the members of Congress on many of his experiences and observations, and is going to be called back again, so...
I have another meeting on October the 23rd at Congress. There is a reserve organization in Congress that all the individuals that are associated with the military, staff and congressmen and senators, come to these things. The last one was very interesting because they gave me an hour, and at the end of one hour, I said, "Thank you very much," and I expected someone to say something. No one said anything. So I said, "Well, thanks you very much." And Congressman Cantor from Ohio stood up, and he says, "My wife has a question." A lot of wives go to these as well. He said, "Let's go through the Battle of the Bulge. Let's go through where you're firing your weapon lying in the snow, and the rifle sticks to your cheek, and your buddy beside you..." Do I have this right, sir? Said, "Just keep firing, Roger, and I'll blow on it." And that's exactly what happened. There's lots of little stories like that, and so on, and some of them have been in print, I've been published in Morrison Post, and so on and so forth. But thank you very much for honoring me. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Could you come up? Would you mind coming up, and we can present it to you?
All right. We are on to oath of office to new boards and commission members. Are there any members who are here to be sworn in? We are on to public comment period. So I've got two comment slips. The first one that I have is from Chair Susan Carney from the school board.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch. Good evening, members of City Council, colleagues. This evening, I wanted to take just a few minutes to talk to you about a piece of work the school board was doing over the summer, which we adopted at our September meeting. As you may recall, in June, we had a community-wide visioning session, which some of you attended, to get input about the vision and direction and priorities for our school division. We took input from that, and we have created a three-year plan for the schools. I think you may have a copy of that in front of you. It's a one-page document. We worked very hard to get it on a single page so the community could understand it and have a clear idea about the direction of the schools for the next three years. The vision and mission are at the top. We continue to think about every single child here in Falls Church. And then we have priorities for the next three years under the pillars that you've become familiar with over the last few years of our budget deliberations. Things like 21st century teaching and learning, excellent staff, modern secure schools, readiness for learning small classes, and of course, responsible fiscal management. I wanted to just bring this to your attention so you'll know that we've taken this action. We'll be presenting this information to all of our advisory boards and committees. It's posted on our website. I'll be writing about it in the news press this week. We want the entire community to understand where we're headed, and I wanted you to be among the first to have this. So, as you read it, if you have questions about it, feel free to reach out to me, and I'll be happy to sit down and chat with you or talk with you on the phone. There are some things here that we'll be working on together, most specifically the facilities items, and there are a few on there. So, thank you again for a chance to talk to you about it, and feel free to reach out to me if need be. Good night.
Thank you very much, Susan. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Tim Stevens, Chair of the E S C.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. Several years ago, the city sent a delegation of four people comprised of city staff and volunteers from the E S C to Charlotte, North Carolina, to participate, along with similar delegations from our neighboring jurisdictions, in a national forum to develop an improved residential building code, one that would result in new homes that are more energy-efficient. The outcome of that event was the 2012 International Energy Conservation Code, or as it's called, the 2012 I E C C. The code was designed to achieve a 30% improvement in energy efficiency over the previous building code. The 2012 I E C C represents a model code that is implemented in jurisdictions throughout the country, and in the case of Virginia, being a Dillon state, it means that the code has to be adopted by the state before it applies to jurisdictions like the City of Falls Church. The state agency that has the lead in developing new building codes in the state of Virginia is the Board of Housing and Community Development. Unfortunately, the staff of the Department of Housing and Community Development has accepted amendments which would weaken the proposed 2012 I E C C. Why would they do this? Very simply, some builders aren't concerned about the savings that consumers would enjoy through reduced utility bills over time. They are focused instead on a slightly lower upfront cost to construct a less efficient house. The Department of Energy has provided estimates that the 2012 I E C C would yield savings to consumers after about four years of occupancy. That is, after four years, the savings in utility bills would exceed the additional costs associated with building a more efficient house. The Board of Housing and Community Development is taking comments on the proposal to weaken the 2012 I E C C up until this Friday. What I'd like to do is ask you to send in a brief note to express your support for implementing the 2012 I E C C as proposed, without the weakening amendments. And by doing so, you would join both the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors and the Arlington Board, both of whom have expressed their support for the 2012 I E C C as proposed. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Tim. And I think on this item, Ms. Berry, if I can ask that you work with Wyatt and see what's needed, and given that some of this may go to the federal government...
I think you do it.
I'm going to not partake in that discussion or signing any of the documents that would go up because of that.
Okay.
But I would just ask Wyatt and Ms. Berry to coordinate that and let council know what our options are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Those are all the speaker slips that I have. Ms. Chaff, you'd summarize the written comments we have?
Council, you have three items. Actually, you have four items before you in your packet. Mr. Nick Benton of the Falls Church News Press sent a letter proposing that the city immediately reinstate the Weekly Focus in the Falls Church News Press, given that there is a budget surplus. Eric Pelton at 303 Oak Street encouraged the council to remove funding for improvements to City Hall. In the bond request before council tonight, he questioned whether a better option might be to build a new city hall that might provide more value and last longer. And at the back, in addition to what you have, after 5:00 tonight, he sent another email, and he expounded on a similar sentiment. Brian Williams, who's an E D A member, sent you an email discussing the issue of rehabbing versus rebuilding for city structures, and he wants to make sure public projects are in balance and that the council is making tough choices that are logical, not only for the next several years, but also for the next several decades. And those are your written comments.
Thank you. We're on to council requests. Council, any requests? Okay. We are on to report of the... Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Carter?
I don't know if this is a request or a... I guess it maybe is. Wyatt, we had talked earlier about trying to do a walking tour several weeks ago of the city for the city council. Do you have any information as to when that might be scheduled?
We will follow up with you and schedule that shortly with council. We wanted you to get healthy. But we've laid out an itinerary and a route, and we'll send that out to council and then just pick dates that will suit everybody the best. But we're geared up for it and think it's a great idea.
Lyra?
I would just ask that it be done sort of as a pub crawl. You know, either that or a yogurt crawl or something like... Have a theme to it, okay, Wyatt? Not just a thematic approach to this. Thank you.
All right. Dave?
In terms of council requests, I've gotten a lot of citizen concern about parking enforcement toward residents in terms of parking in front of their houses, and there have been editors to the... Letters to the editor. Editors to the letter, right. There have been letters to the editor on the subject, and I wondered if you could take a look at it to see whether we need to make some ordinance changes to reflect the legitimate interests of residents. I certainly want the laws enforced, that's not the point, but there's been a lot of community interest in that. And also some commentary just on the police generally, so perhaps we can discuss that in another forum, but I did want to address the parking enforcement issue upfront, and something that I think we need to take a look at. Thank you.
Other council members? We are on to the report of the city manager of the council.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, and members of council. One thing I want to start my report on is a piece of good news, an accomplishment of the city. The EPA has recently notified the city that we've met the green power community challenge threshold for purchase of green power throughout the community and with our government facilities as well. The council will recall that in September of 2012, a year ago, you authorized me and staff to go forward with an application to the EPA to join as a green power community, and I'm very pleased to say that we've met the challenge across the city. 3% of our power that's being purchased is sustainably derived from wind or solar, from sustainable service sources. Tim Stevens is here with the Climate Change Task Force and the Environmental Services Council, and he's been a great leader in this effort. Brenda Creel on city staff, and Ken Lasso, I think very important in terms of administering the program and getting the word out and generating enthusiasm for it. We're going to have an opportunity on October 7th to brief the council in more detail, and we're trying to work with the EPA on more public information about what this means and more recognition for the community. But we are the first in the Commonwealth of Virginia to meet the challenge, and so it is a big deal. It's a great accomplishment for the city, and I think it reflects our values and beliefs in sustainability. So I just wanted to note that at the outset. With respect to the referendum on the water sale, just a reminder to the public that we'll have a town hall meeting on Saturday at 10:00 at the community center, and look forward to presenting information about the referendum and answering questions. And we have FAQs that have been prepared. Those are available on the website, and people can download those or come by City Hall and pick those up. And we will have an additional forum later in October, and we'll get publicity out on that. But right now, we have a forum on Saturday at 10:00, and all are welcome to attend that at the community center. Lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we've finished our FY13 year-end financial report. The auditors are now at work and will produce a CAFR, our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, in December. But we are able to report out to the public what our results were financially for the last fiscal year, which ended on June 30th. And I wanted to just share a couple of key points from that presentation that we had at work session last week. Richard LaCondre provided a briefing for the city council, and there was an extensive discussion and an in-depth discussion of our financial results, but I wanted to just hit on a couple of key things for the sake of the community and emphasize a couple of points from it. One thing that I will note as I'm queuing this up, just in terms of the basics, our revenues over our expenses resulted in a surplus of $2.7 million, $2,169,000 of a net surplus, and that constitutes about 3.1% of our annual overall operations for the city budget. And this includes schools and general government. Now, of that surplus, it's very important to note that it was anticipated. We knew going into our third quarter financial reports last spring, as well as with understanding of the way that our taxes are administered in the city, that we would generate a surplus in FY13. And as a consequence, there was a great deal of discussion about that last spring, and in the adoption of the FY14 budget, the city council allocated that surplus to pay-as-you-go capital and to the stormwater utility improvements, capital projects in the stormwater. And the rest of the surplus is grants or encumbrances of revenues for grants that we've received and the projects need to be executed, or locally funded projects that have begun and will be carried out in FY14. All in all, those obligations are $2.5 million, and so the obligations exceed the net operating surplus that we have for FY13. So again, it was anticipated, and as part of the budget adoption, the council allocated that surplus to the FY14 budget. And in so doing, I will remind everybody that the council was able to do two things with respect to what citizens pay. One, the council... I had proposed a budget that was balanced that required a six cents increase in the tax rate. The council reduced that to a three-and-a-half cent increase in the tax rate by using this anticipated surplus from FY13 and deploying it to one-time capital needs in FY14 and taking that out of the tax-supported projects. In addition, the second thing that the city council did in adopting the budget is the council created a stormwater utility, adopted a budget of $1.8 million for stormwater improvements in the city, and deferred the first payment that citizens would make, which was scheduled for December, deferred that till June of next year's. And so, in other words, the payment that citizens would make to fund the stormwater utility that was scheduled to start in December this year... utility that was scheduled to start in December this year was pushed out six months to June of next year. So with those two actions, the FY13 budget was fully obligated. The other thing we wanted to note, just on the revenue side, this shows our local tax revenues that are really driven by economic activity in the city. So they list personal property, sales taxes, meals taxes, B-Pole, and other taxes. And if you look at the bottom line, between FY12 and FY11, we experienced 7.8% growth in all those types of revenues. So people were purchasing new cars, sales taxes had increased significantly, meals, et cetera. When you compare FY13 over FY12, we just note a cautionary note that that growth of revenues was 0.5% between FY13 and FY12. So we'll continue to monitor that closely, month to month. We get our sales tax receipts and our meals tax receipts on a monthly basis, so we'll be able to monitor trends in terms of economic activity in the city. Sales tax in particular is one that we note a decrease, over a 6% decrease in sales tax receipts in FY13 relative to FY12. So that's our year-end 13 look. Now, we always take this opportunity to look at our FY14 budget revenue forecast. We made those forecasts almost 12 months ago now. So with the additional data, are they on track? Our FY14 forecast remains slightly below what our FY13 actuals were, about $200,000 below what our FY13 actuals are. So while there is compression in the growth rate, we do believe at this point that our revenue forecasts remain sound, they remain reasonable for FY14 and a sound basis for the budget. So that's a quick summary of the discussion at work session. We will do a more in-depth look, multi-year forecasts, our forecasts and our projections for FY15, joint with the city council and the school board. And we're shooting for a date of Thursday, November 14th. I'll send that note out to the school board and the city council to get confirmations on availability, but then we just had a meeting with the school board and city council liaison group, and that was identified as the preferred date, again, Thursday, November 14th, to have a much deeper and in-depth look at our forecasts and trends on the cost side, trends on the revenue side for FY15 and beyond. And that'll be a public meeting. It's scheduled for 7:30 at Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, and we'll have the meeting in the new refurbished library there at TJ Elementary School on November 14th. That's all I have to report tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Council members? Mr. Kalin.
I have a series of comments more than questions. Thank you, Wyatt, for the presentation. At the outset, let me say that I concur with your numbers. This is, you know, the way that actually shows. It is not the way I necessarily would have presented it to explain why we needed to have the three and a half cent tax rate increase. Money is fungible, and we needed to have enough money in FY14 to pay for the three-plus percent increase in city expenses and the more or less 14% increase in school expenses. The way it is done is that we have to have that in the tax billing in June of the previous fiscal year. If we don't have a surplus, we can't fund those activities. Now, you're correct, you can apply them where you wish, and you've applied them to one-time-only expenses, but in the end of the day, these were, there is no surplus, there never was a surplus, and in fact, there are activities that we didn't do, that we had budgeted in order to make it a balanced budget. And that was, as we were discussing just before, we had, we were going to establish a capital account, which we didn't, and that was to have been $500,000, which simply was dropped from the budget proposal, which we will have to make up later on at another point. So we can move the expenses down the road somewhat, but sooner or later, we have to pick it up. And FY15 is going to be the difficult experience that I believe I predicted. We do not have a surplus in the sense that these are funds that are available to do with what we wish. These are monies that are already obligated. I've tried to explain that in an article that I prepared, which has been published in the Falls Church Post, but has been, comments about it have been picked up in the news press and have, in a separate article in the Falls Church Times as well, which has also a number of comments. So there is citizen interest in finding out how the budget process actually works. In fact, as I indicate, it is, the way we do it here in Virginia and many other municipalities, it is an accounting gimmick that allows us to claim we have budget balances or balanced budgets in one fiscal year while in fact getting credit for that and at the same time already having designed to expend some of those funds in the following year. Eventually, it'll catch up, but by six months of the appearance of a balanced budget, this is the way it's done, so we actually get two tax rates a year, not one, in Falls Church and many other municipalities. I want to emphasize that this is not something that happens just in Falls Church, this is a statewide approach. I think, Wyatt, you said 90% of municipalities in the state utilize this. So, and it's clearly permitted by the state, but it's a gimmick. And we shouldn't confuse the actual amount of money that we have, which is zero actual surplus, with what is claimed because of the accounting requirements of it being a 2013 event. And with that, I leave it open, and certainly I welcome any opportunity to explain to citizens how this process works, if there's any interest. I request that I be contacted, I'll be glad to describe it.
Other council members? Mr. Duncan.
I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Kalin's Herculean efforts to explain what is nearly incomprehensible to the average voter and to issue a plea that, at least from my perspective, any explanation which rests on gimmick or quirk, you know, having to use those kind of words, is just fundamentally not going to be well-received or understood. And, you know, we've talked about this before, aligning our tax year with our fiscal year. We talked about it again in the meeting before this meeting, and I know that there are pros and cons to it, but a lot of what we are wringing our hands over tonight and wrung our hands over last summer would be addressed, or at least more clearly explained, if we could bite the bullet and align the collection of our taxes with our fiscal year. It would cost us a one-time expense, just as back when we went to this quirky gimmick, it gained us some money. But I do hope that the future council will seriously consider this, because it's really just difficult. One of the best comments I read online in response to what Ira wrote, Ira Kalin is usually right on target, but I have to say that reading his post in the Falls Church Post left me still scratching my head. We either have 2.8 million, 2.2 million, 1.7 million less than one of the previous two numbers, or are we $300,000 in the hole? Ouch, my head hurts. And this is somebody, you know, who generally I've read his postings and is, you know, I think sympathetic to the perspective that Ira's trying to argue. So to close, just the date of the first meeting, November 14th, was deliberately set to include the people who will be elected in this coming November election. So we are aware that we want to try to get an early start and include both the outgoing and the incoming counselors in that discussion, and I think that's a, that's a good choice. That's a good choice for a date. Thanks.
Press chair, Slater.
Thanks very much. I'm not going to use rhetoric, but rather just focus on the numbers. And I think the numbers here are actually pretty good this year. When you think about what this council did in terms of the FY14 budget, we fully funded an unprecedented increase in school costs that were well justified by the schools. We advanced-funded the stormwater utility for six months. We maintained, in fact, more than a 17% fund, unrestricted fund balance, which the experts say a municipality of our size needs. And we came in at a tax rate significantly lower than the projections, which at one point were 141, and we ended up with 130.5. So I think we balanced things pretty well. And going forward, we'll make the changes that people want us to make, and we'll work on transparency, but I think we had a thorough discussion at the work session last Monday. It's very important for people to look at that. And it's very important to look at the presentation today. We work within the system that we have, and if we need to make changes, we'll go ahead and do that. But the net result, I think, is that we're financially strong. In fact, are recognizing that we may have significant capital needs in the future. We're working on a fund balance which is in fact above the 17%. And we're doing our best to not hold on to money from the taxpayers that we don't need to hold on to. And we're fully funding the schools and taking care of the city's needs. So I would say in terms of budget objectives, we've collectively met all the fundamental objectives. And now, in terms of improvements to make in the future, I'm all for a discussion about that. So, thanks very much.
Other council members?
So I just want to put a couple of points on the table. Certainly, this accounting issue's been going on for several years. I, along with some other members of the council, really were trying to push at least last go-around when we did have the bandwidth to do that, try to actually bring the calendar year and the fiscal year in line. But at that point, there wasn't enough support to actually make it happen. What we did do is I believe our charter now allows for us to do that, should we choose to do that. And I think the interpretation that we've gotten back is we could have done it with or without a charter change, but it was cleaner to do it with a charter change. So previous councils certainly had the power to do that and clear up some of this confusion that we would, that we keep having. And as I tried to point out during my comments at the work session, because I could see this coming a mile away, that we were going to have yet again confusion about it, despite my pleas to the press and others to really look at the numbers, perhaps talk to us and talk to city staff. We've had stories and lots of confusion about what the surplus is. As I understand it, the best way I can describe it is that we get paid on a date given, it's a snapshot in time, but those monies have already been essentially accounted for and spent because of the budget we pass. So the way I think about it in the simplest terms is you get paid one day, you get paid on a Monday, and you have bills coming due throughout the rest of the month, et cetera, that you've obligated. That's probably the simplest way to understand it, but yet, when we tried to explain it during the work session, it was either not heard or not reported on. So I hope the comments that we're making this evening help to clarify that. But I do worry that it is somewhat unique in finance of what Virginia and other localities may do. There's certainly reasons why it was done years ago, and it's very difficult, once you have made that change, to go back, as Mr. Kalin pointed out, there is an expense associated with changing it back. But I do think that explaining this over and over to our citizens and to media outlets has a cost itself. So I hope that the members of this council who carry over to next year and the new coming council members rethink utilizing the charter change that we have and at least bringing the fiscal year and the calendar year in sync. That way, really what we're going to be looking at if that were to happen is really surpluses in the sense of any economic growth or decreases that we hadn't projected for, rather than looking at the snapshot in time and explaining, well, the money's already been essentially accounted for because of the budget that we passed last go-around during the April timeframe, and just trying to explain it because it's not intuitive, it's not how most people do their budget and financing. So, and I think despite our best efforts to explain that, the message gets lost for whatever reason. Mr. Kalin.
Thank you. I agree. I'd like to associate myself with your comments. I think that's absolutely correct, Nader. And I think Dave's comments are correct, and appreciate the desire not to use rhetoric, but I would like to make a prediction that what we have done in 2012 set the stages for the problems in 2013 and now the 2015. These decisions will come back to haunt, and the FY 2015 budget discussion is going to be very, very difficult. And either to look at another serious tax increase or serious cuts, most likely, to the city side, which I don't know where they would come from. But we have set the table for a very difficult FY 2015 budget discussion. That's my prediction, and I'll check in with you guys as that takes place.
Press chair, Slater.
Just for the record, it may come as a shock, but I see things a bit differently. Let's move on. Thank you.
If I can just make one process suggestion, is I think maybe very difficult to have the conversation about what we want to do about our fiscal year and calendar year in the midst of the actual budget because of the expenses associated with it. Would it maybe worthwhile at least exploring, and I want to hear from other council members, at least getting the documents in order, and we can perhaps take a vote on it, and then it's followed up, at least there's policy guidance given, and council has taken the initial step, and then they can make the choice when it comes to the budget to do or not cost out the change. I don't know if that's workable, but at least I want to start taking baby steps to it, rather than the sticker shock that folks may feel that they will face when it comes to the hard-crunching budget numbers. And we've taken one step in that direction, and that was by the charter change. Perhaps another step that we can take is some policy ordinance change, and then the ultimate would be what happens come the budget. And that way, we're not sort of all looking at the number and just saying flat out, no. Is that workable for folks as far as how to start logically thinking about it?
Yeah.
All right. So, Mr. Shields, if you can try to put what I tried to express forward in a meaningful way, whether it's an ordinance change that's required or a resolution, whatever you think is more workable, working with the city attorney.
Okay. In terms of, it would be an ordinance change. It's a fairly simple one in terms of the words, but what we need to do is just go through what the consequences are of going either way, and we can, I think we can present that pretty clearly.
And if we can do that before, say, November, I think that might be...
With all due respect, this is a fundamental issue, and I think the numbers are going to be very large, and this is not something you want to do quickly.
So...
But I think we should, the discussion should go on, but I, I think it's so fundamental. I mean, this change basically saved the city in the 1990s. So I don't want to set up a circumstance where we undercut our long-term financial well-being, but we'll only know that when we see some numbers and we deliberate it carefully.
Should we do that after, then, our, I believe our meeting would be November 14th with the schools, that we do that shortly after that?
Mr. Kalin.
The way the mathematics work, if we actually have a lower increase in assessed values this year, the cost to the city would be less than it would have been if there was a rapid, an upward and rapidly increasing rise in assessments. So this might not be a bad year because assessments are not projected to grow as much as they have in the past. I don't know that this is so fundamental. What it is, is just a very, you know, irritating and difficult... What it is, is just a very, you know, irritating and difficult process of explanation. It doesn't move the numbers a lot, but it's something that's very confusing and should be addressed.
I guess I would weigh in by, I think the numbers are relevant. I have no idea the magnitude that we're talking about. Are we talking about one million, five million? Do we have even a rough idea? Oh, that's it. So we're talking hundreds of thousands...
Let me come to the council with numbers.
Yeah, I think before we start throwing numbers out, I think we need the analysis.
It is relevant, at least from my perspective, what the magnitude of the number is. I don't need to know an exact number, but if we're talking millions, that's something different than hundreds of thousands of dollars, in my opinion. So I think it is, I think I would like to know a general idea, even back of the envelope, what this might cost.
Let me get the council numbers. I can't give that to you tonight. And also, to explain how you derive the number will require us another half an hour discussion of this policy item. So I would recommend that we do schedule a discussion, just to talk about what the numbers would be, and so we understand what the ramifications would be.
And my only point is, if we can not tie this directly to the line item budget numbers, but have a policy discussion, including what the costs would be, and then making a decision of what we're going to do at that point, go forward, not go forward, hold it until we get to the actual budget. But at least we're having the policy discussion, and we make some commitments about which way we're going to go. That way, it's not wrapped in to the budget cycle, and we look at a one-time cost, and nobody wants to go there, which is, I think, sort of what happened last year at the end of the day. All right? And the notion would be, bring it back sometime after November fourteenth, after our meeting with the schools. But at least at that meeting, start messaging that out to the school board and to the council members elected, to the school board, relax that this is an item that the council's going to be discussing with the community and gaining community input on it as well. Does that work for everybody?
Mr. Duncan?
That sounds fine. Just mentioning the schools, and their procedures would, of course, need to change also, so they would need to be on board with us, is that right?
Absolutely. I think that's right. Is that right, Mr. Shields, that this would, actually, I...
Yeah, I think this would just be a city council decision. It would certainly affect... I don't think it would, actually, to tell the truth.
Okay. All right.
But it's certainly something that we'd want to talk to them about, even if it didn't directly impact how they do their budgets. All right.
Yeah, I think this is a good way to go, and if it improves transparency, great. But I think it's important to know what the cost of that is, short term and long term. Thanks.
All right. Anything else for Mr. Shields? All right, let's move on to business on the agenda. And before we read the items, I'd like to disclose, as it relates to several of the items, that my daughter is currently on the waiting list for the Child Development Center and is in the process of being enrolled. And the items that we'll be discussing would have a bearing on multiple families there. And then two, that I own property at 243 Country Drive, and was previously on the Winter Hill Community Association Board, and currently, my wife is president of, on the board. And given the various housing and financial issues that are going to be discussed, it's going to impact numerous folks that I can consider, both the issues related to my daughter and to living at 243 Country Drive, fairly objectively and in the public interest. And again, those disclosures are for several of the items coming up.
First on before your council is here, thirteen dash twenty-six. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation public improvement bonds.
Happy Monday, council.
Happy Monday, Richard.
What is before you is a resolution to authorize the issuance of general obligation bonds not to exceed nineteen million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand. Of that amount, seventeen, a little over seventeen million is for general fund, another one point nine million approximately is for enterprise funds. I would be happy to go through this in detail, if you like. There is a breakdown at line twenty-three of the individual projects, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, council. Any questions? Councilmember Kalin.
Thank you. I don't know if this is more for Wyatt or for you, Richard, but on line fifty point two, where it says, basically, an option to raise the city existing structure and build a new structure on city-owned land, I just want to clarify that the city-owned land you're referring to is the current site. It's the current municipal site.
Yeah, in terms of trying to capture the consensus that was reached at work session, I believe what was intended there is the cost between rehabbing this building with a modest-sized expansion versus a brand-new structure on the city hall campus. I think in terms of where that could go, you know, likely, it would be at the corner of Little Falls and Park, where we have space. I think that's what this paragraph is envisioned to try to encompass in terms of the universe of options that we would study with an architect. That was my attempt to capture the council's discussion in this staff report.
That is to say, I understand, and I think that's fine. The footprint doesn't have to be exactly on the current, but it would be in the three acres that we currently own in this area.
That was what I had in mind in drafting this, to reflect the council discussion. I will say that if it were city-owned land somewhere else on a park or, you know, somewhere else, there could be more variables in terms of that cost analysis. And so what this is intended to be is another option for city hall on this campus.
I do ask that the city clerk please make sure these comments were taken down and put in the transcription. Thank you.
Other council members? Mr. Duncan?
Thank you. I'd like to focus on that, too. I agree. I think with everything that's been said on this, the interest that I have is trying to get a build-new cost compared to a rehab cost exclusive of land costs. So city-owned land, to me, is certainly inclusive of the current campus. If it were city-owned land somewhere else, it would still be city-owned land, and the cost would not be a factor. But I think, hopefully, we can agree to agree, that the important thing here is just to get some real numbers, because last Wednesday, I went to the library board meeting, just as an observer, and was very interested to hear their consultant come with a nearly final report, which includes, I won't say it's a preferred option, but it seemed to be the option that they were going in the direction of, which is to raise the library and replace it with a new building, because their studies have shown that it's very difficult to accomplish what needs to be accomplished by rehabbing the current library. Now, I'm not saying that that's what the consultant's going to recommend or the library board's going to vote for, but the numbers were remarkably interesting, cost of new construction. And I would just like the same kind of comparison to be delivered for city hall work. And that's the end of that speech. The only question I have is, the three point four million in bonds that we are apparently, if we go ahead with this tonight, going to commit to, you know, you can tell from the letters that we're getting and the things you're hearing in the community, I don't believe there is a full understanding of what it is that we are spending that money on. And so I'm wondering, I know that we've lived with this project for quite some time. I wonder if there's something that we could put our fingers on quickly when people ask or send us letters, like Mr. Pelton and Mr. Williams did, that will tell them what it is that three point four million dollars is going to do? And does it make sense to do that much, if we are at least considering other alternatives?
The key things, the key things that that expenditure would accomplish would be refurbishment of the existing structure, to improve its safety, improve, you know, worn-out rooms, including this one, but also install sprinklers where there aren't sprinklers, and they are required by code, by current code, improve the insulation of the building to lower our energy costs, and replace windows where we've identified leaky windows as being a top-ranked loss of heat or cooling in the summertime. Those are the key things, sprinkling, energy efficiency, and rehabilitation of specific areas of the building.
Other council members? Ms. Berry?
Yeah, just to follow on Mr. Duncan's comments, two of those comments. Yes, it's absolutely true that we have heard from two thoughtful and articulate citizens on the topic of the expenditure of three point four million, and that's fine. Two citizens are not twelve thousand citizens. And this discussion of the refurbishment of city hall for safety reasons and for the carrying on of important police and sheriff and judicial business is not new. This conversation happened this fiscal year and last fiscal year, and there was incredible detail. I recall that Mr. Snyder, in particular, was articulate on this topic. And I regret that citizens did not feel that they had sufficient information, but I can assure you that this conversation and these details are captured in every document, every budget document, every council minute that surrounded the CIP discussions. So if there's confusion, I invite citizens to go back into the records and refresh their memories. And on the second topic, I am equally concerned about the language in line fifty-two to fifty-four, and certainly am anxious to vote for this resolution, because I would like to see some of this, I'd like to see all of these CIP projects move forward, but I don't want any confusion about the intent of the language, city-owned property, because it is my understanding from Mr. Wyatt, from Mr. Wyatt, from Mr. Shields' discussions, that what we are talking about is not only a conversation about alternate uses or alternate budget projections regarding new structure, but in fact, we are talking about using this particular campus or campus near the city hall campus for any discussions about building a new structure. So I just want to make sure that that is my understanding, and that's what we're voting on tonight.
Other council members? Mr. Kalin?
Just to clarify, it can be done where you don't consider the land of where it might be, because each site has a different grading prospect, has different soil complexion, different access, ingress, egress. So it's got to be very much part of a specific recommendation. And to repeat, if we're understanding this as a building, an option of measuring the cost of the structure on this area, fine, but that's as far as I'm prepared to go on this.
Other council members? Presser's line.
I like the new mics now. I push the button, something happens. I know I've said this to council already, but just for the public's benefit, exactly what Ms. Berry said, this has been repeatedly studied, and not even this year and last year. All the years I was on the school board, there was a long-term facilities task force that was comprised of citizens from across the community that held meetings on both the city side and the school side, and studied option after option. They looked at every bit of both empty land and potentially empty land available, as well as options of build versus remodel. And in the meantime, at the end of the day, what we have on the table today was the recommendation of what has to be done for safety reasons, if nothing else in the meantime. I know there were some concerns raised about piecemeal this and piecemeal on the schools, and frankly, it's all been considered, and there aren't any great answers. And I know some people don't agree with the decision, but it doesn't mean the council and the school board didn't listen, didn't consider it before coming out to what we thought was the best solution available, given the resources at this time.
Presser's line.
Thank you. A couple points. It would appear that we have a lot of community discussion about a whole lot of capital projects, high school, library, city hall. And there's a lot of work that has to be done until we decide which of those we're going to move and what order and how we're going to do it. In the meantime, however, people have to work in city hall, the public has to be served in city hall. And I view what we're voting on tonight as simply continuing to make this building usable for the public and for the employees while the discussion goes on about what we're going to do and when we're going to do it, and not only in the context of city hall, but others. So I think it's important that we maintain a safe working relationship and a safe working place for employees and a safe place for our citizens to do their public business, to attend meetings like this. And this will also get us data that will help inform the debate going forward. So for those reasons, while I appreciate those who are saying we shouldn't spend this money, I think it's essential that we do it for both the safety and efficiency reasons. And even if you were to replace this building, it would take years to plan, to finance, and to do the project. Meanwhile, we would have a building that is less safe and less efficient than it ought to be. So for those reasons, I support moving forward with this bond issue, including the money for city hall, to maintain it as a usable structure, a usable facility, and a safe and efficient one for both the public and our employees. Thanks.
Other council members?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Let me ask him, what have we decided about city hall? In other words, you know, it seems like it's still an open issue. And what I think we're considering tonight is spending a pretty good chunk of change on things like windows, like we heard, that aren't short-term fixes, but are longer-term fixes. And to me, I think it is a valid question to say, what are we going to do? In other words, if we want to build a new city hall, then putting in new windows is probably not a great idea, if we want to do that in the near future. So I think in some ways, what the discussion we're having is relevant and an appropriate discussion to have. There may be some fixes that are desperate, that need to be made. We can't meet ADA requirements, we need a new stoop so that we meet those requirements. Other things seem, from what I've heard, to be at longer term. I think as a council, what we need to do is get our arms around what we want to do with this place. You know, do we want a new city hall? If we do, let's get on with it, let's do it right. Are we going to keep what we have and fix it up? Then let's get on with that, too. But I think we are kind of muddling along without really committing to what we want to do in the long run. I think we do need to make that commitment in the near future, so that we can spend the money as wisely as possible.
Other council members?
All right, can I just ask a question? Because I want Joanna to be able to finish. In line with that, if we vote for this tonight and it goes through, I just want to make sure that I'm clear where I go with my interest requests, emails, correspondence about pressing for a cost of new build estimate, in the same way that I did with the library. You know, I went to the library board meetings, I wrote them a letter, they wrote me a letter back. It was all very public and transparent. I want to do the same thing in regards to city hall. So as I understand it, the effort to cost out a build-new is going to be buried in the, or carried in the six hundred and seventy-five thousand architecture and engineering money and process. Is that right? And what's the timetable for that process?
Cindy Muster is our project manager for this. She has issued, I believe, the RFP for the architectural services. So we would, we're moving forward to develop those professional plans about the best options. I will note, however, that the last investment in this building was in 1986, significant investment. There have been countless efforts to determine what the future of city hall has been, including the city center plan in 2003, which was never adopted, partly because of the public expenditures to move public facilities in the city center area. There've been lots of different studies and lots of different efforts to wrestle with this question. In the meantime, we have a core facility that has, it needs investment, if it's going to continue to be safe for the public and for employees to do the work. And so what this stands for is the proposition to make some of those... And so what this stands for is the proposition to make some of those core investments, to keep water out of the building, to keep the building essentially functioning. It doesn't, you know, we can consider other options and understand the cost implications to them. I do believe that when we look at the cost implications of building a brand-new structure and compare that to rehabbing and expanding this one, having looked at those before, you know, three or four years ago, I believe that the answer will be expansion here. I think that's a very safe belief that that's ultimately going to be the decision. But in the meantime, waiting another three or four years to do that public deliberation process without making investments in this building carries significant risks. And I think the council needs to be aware of those. And one of those risks is, and we, we're on formal notice of this, is that in terms of our court operations here, we have had inspections by the marshal service and by other experts that have determined that improvements need to be made to our, our court operations. And so we're trying to move forward with those, those core needs, do architecture and planning for the bigger questions. And we think that that's a, I recommend it to council as a sound way to proceed.
Mr. Callen and then Ms. Berry.
John, could you, building on why I said precise what our legal exposures are if we fail to improve court safety?
I've not had a chance to, you know, do a formal legal analysis, but I can tell you, without even having done that, that we do face significant legal exposure. We are on notice, as the city manager just said, of the need to make these safety and security improvements. Not making those improvements, if God forbid, you know, there were to be some sort of security breach, that, that's a problem. And if you'd like, I mean, I can provide, report out in greater detail in a closed session, but it is a, is a significant concern to me.
And I would also just note for the record that when we've received those reports in the past, we have responded to them. We've, we've changed our staffing levels in the courtroom, we've changed operations in response to information we've received. But in terms of the big push of, of making structural changes, that is embodied in this, in this larger effort to, to address the needs at City Hall.
Dave, I don't know if that, if that discussion answered your question, but, but I just wanted to say, I think right now, we're, we're ready to take a vote and I would like to, I'd like to move this to a vote. Again, I, I thank Mr. Pepe for, for clarifying that, that my recollection is correct. We have had this conversation, we've had this conversation repeatedly, we have talked about all these elements within the CIP. You know, Dave and Phil, you did not have the opportunity of, of being on council when these conversations happened. But nevertheless, we are looking at a relatively modest $3.4 million investment in public safety, functionality, and now this, this, this level of procedural concern that, that's, that's even, even more important. And, and Dave, as to your question regarding, you know, what is our decision about, you know, long-term City Hall, I think, even though I'm, I'm kind of uncomfortable about the language in line 53 and 54, I think that's embedded in there, that there is a, there, there will be discussions about and costing out about what a new City Hall would look like and, and where we would go with that. But again, I urge council to, to, you know, to stick, to stick with business. And the business is to make this decision about going to the bond issuance on, on a range of topics, including City Hall, including schools, including fire station issues, including stormwater improvements. Move it forward. This is, this is the business we're, we're supposed to do and I think we've had enough discussion on it and I would certainly urge the mayor to move for a vote.
If I could respond.
Well, we'll move for that, except that Dave wants to say something.
I mean, I would say that let's try to come up with a timetable then to make a decision on whether we're going to do a new City Hall. And I think, because what we're, you guys can roll up your hands, but I mean, the fact is that since I've been on city council, this has been a rolling discussion. And I don't think we can make good decisions if we don't know what our endpoint is, what our ultimate goal. And if our ultimate goal is to have a new, brand-new City Hall, then we will make probably different decisions. If we decide we want to rehab this place, we might make other decisions. I think as a council, we need to get closure as to what we want to do with this place. And I think we ought to set a timetable to say, in the next six months, we're going to come up with a decision as to what we want to do long-term in this campus. And I think that's a reasonable thing to do so we can make the best decisions.
Yeah, no, that's good, but not hold this.
I'm not saying to hold this vote, but I am saying that I think as, as part and parcel this, that, okay, this one's in front of us tonight, but we're going to have more of these in front of us as we go on and I don't want to have, keep having this discussion because I think we should put up or shut up, decide what we're going to do. And I haven't seen that. It seems like kind of half of us want to keep moving forward, inching along, but other folks don't want to, they want to do something different. And I think we need to decide what our goal is so we can achieve that goal.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'm, that's exactly what I am trying to say with the question that I posed. I just want to know the process, the timetable, and the place that I go to direct my inquiry so that, you know, we do decide. Because I'm, I'm not sure this council's going to be able to decide it, it may be for future council, I don't know. But I would like to have a process that we get on with it. I mean, you forget, my mother-in-law's name is on this building. I, I've not been on council all these years, but I have closely watched the history of how we have dealt with our public facilities. And, and I at least see this as an opportunity to, you know, take a step back, consider whether we want to build new for 60 or 70 years rather than rehab for, for 20 or 30. And that's all I want. I just want the information to make that choice intelligently.
And I think that, that's a fair point, but I, but I do think it's important to clarify a couple of things. Mr. Tarter, you're right that it has been a rolling process. As the city manager pointed out, there has been numerous discussions about this future of City Hall within this council, previous councils, et cetera, for a number of years now. And it comes up every time we take up the CIP about the future of this. It's come up every time there's a request for a study, et cetera. So I don't think it's fair to say that the council has never discussed it nor given direction as far as ways to proceed. I think it's embedded in numerous documents and that could be where part of the problem is, is that we haven't taken full stock of the various documents. I believe I proposed that when Mr. Duncan wanted some of these issues explored, that Mr. Duncan perhaps worked with Ms. Mester and if he wanted to go into a different direction, bring forward proposals, essentially changing direction of those previously passed and voted on documents. So I think that's where some of the confusion may be, is that we don't have a good inventory as individual council members of, of what actions previously the council took. Certainly the CIP is one of them, where we've had discussions about the type of changes that we want to see in City Hall and what's authorized and sort of tiering the issues. And I think that's why city staff has brought this bond resolution forward.
I guess if I could reply, I mean, I don't think there's been a lack of discussion, but I think we need to come to a decision. We need to give guidance or formally decide what direction we want to go instead of having these discussions perpetually and maybe spending money in ways that we would spend them differently if we knew that our outcome was going to be different. If in fact, we're going to raise this building, then maybe we'd spend money a little differently. I think we need to set a timetable to come up with a decision on this and, and give firm guidance, not discuss it, but make a decision.
But, but I, but I think, Dave, to the point is, we have voted on it, we voted on it on the CIP and we voted on it on numerous other policy direction documents. So this is not the first time this has come up for a vote. That, that's my only point, is that it's come up in various documents that have been voted on.
I'm not saying this particular allocation, but I'm saying in general, I don't believe we've made a decision whether we're going to rehab this place, correct me if I'm wrong, or whether we want to tear it down and build a new. And so to me, that's, it's entirely relevant to this discussion. And again, for a future day, I think we should set a timetable on when we want to have a resolution on this. And then in the next six months or year, or whatever it is, we're going to decide what the ultimate outcome of this place will be.
Other council members? Why don't we go to Mr. Callen first and then Vice Mayor Snyder?
It was a little hard to follow the, the discussion. You know, we have, and I have to support Ms. Berry and, and Ron Pepe too, we have this, yeah, if you're talking about what do we want to do, that's the purpose of the 600,000 or whatever it is for the study. And that's what Wyatt was referring to, whether it makes, what are the cost comparisons between the two? That would be given a review. But what we have in this city council, Dave, is let's come to a final conclusion in six months and then the six months come and say, well, let's, we need to study it a little bit more, let's come to a final conclusion in another six months. And the final conclusion becomes the delay mechanism. So we go forward with this and in that study will be the cost comparison of rehabilitation or expansion versus a new City Hall in this site. And then six months, you'll be here, you can decide what you want to do.
I would just say as a group. We ought to try to really get closure on this because it's been a year and this discussion seems like it's happening anew. And maybe this study hasn't occurred, but I, the discussion certainly has multiple times. And I just think that the best way is to figure out where we want to be and then we can figure out how to get there. But I think we're repeating ourselves and maybe we're on the same sheet of music. But I think we do, as a council, need to stop studying and talking and start doing and make a conclusion. That's what we want to do.
Let's make a decision. First, Ms. Snyder.
Just very quickly, I, I want to particularly endorse the comments of Councilmember Berry about this overall bond package. I do say that how we move forward in this is not in a vacuum. We have other major capital issues out there, including a potential new school, including a potential new library. Do we combine efforts? Do we combine parking? I mean, this is now a highly interrelated, complicated issue that needs work and it needs good data. And so we're moving forward to get the data to inform the debate and we're also making this a usable facility while that discussion goes on. So I'm all in favor of moving forward. Thank you.
If I can get a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt. TR 13 dash 26.
If I can get a second?
Second.
Either one.
Vice Mayor Snyder. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. Just no member, there's, I don't have any speaker slips, but I believe that we had comments come in on this. Do you want to summarize the comments or did you already do that earlier?
I'm sorry, I'll call.
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment and ask for the roll call vote.
On TR 13 dash 26, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item before you is TR 13 dash 27, resolution endorsing the City of Falls Church fiscal year 2015 to 2020 application for regional surface transportation program, RSTP funds.
Counsel, Mr. Paul Stotter will provide a brief staff report on this.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch and members of council. Just to let you know, there is no change in the staff report from the work session. I will go over a couple of the highlights from the staff report. City manager said, staff is requesting that city endorse by, yeah, endorse by resolution, the city's application for fiscal years 2015 through 2020 of regional surface transportation funds, RSTP funds. This is a recurring application that the city puts in every fiscal year. Last year's request was for the fiscal years 2014 through 2019. So the new portion of this request is the fiscal year 2020 funds. The application does cover a six-year fiscal year period and that's to allow jurisdictions to better program these funds so that they can anticipate what's coming in and get their projects lined up.
Mr. Mayor, to get started, I would move passage of TR 13 dash 27.
Thank you. If I can get a second? It's Mr. Callen on the second. Any questions? Staff?
Oh, actually, this, this is, this is not a substantive question, but in, just in terms of protocol, Kathy, does it matter about typos in this document?
Yeah.
Okay, because there's, but there's a second one on line 65 as well. And I just didn't know if that was part of the legal protocol. Transportation is misspelled. Yep.
And I think that's all in the staff report.
I've earned.
And that was just, all those edits were in the staff report? I just want to make sure we don't need an amendment to the motion.
And the word fiscal, right?
Can I, can I ask a quick question, staff?
Mr. Tarter, go ahead.
What are the improvements? It doesn't have to be, you know, in incredible detail, but could you just give us a general flavor of what these improvements are?
Right, so we're looking, so really this money is looking out 26 years, but the general class of improvements we're looking at are pedestrian improvements and that would include sidewalk and crosswalk repair. The draft PED plan identified as a fact base, a number of places where the sidewalks and crosswalks are deficient throughout the city. So repair of those things would be included in these funds. Additionally, bicycle facilities in the way of, of signs and highway markings and traffic calming facilities. The neighborhood traffic calming program is, was established to get citizen input on what needs to happen on residential neighborhoods and residential streets. And so these funds could be used to cover those program expenses as well. And lastly, these funds can also be used for utility undergrounding, so long as that utility undergrounding is part of a pedestrian or a bicycle or an ADA project.
Have you determined how you're going to use these? Or I know the general categories, I saw your staff report, are there any specific projects you've slotted to say, you know, we're going to redo the sidewalk on this street or we're going to add bike racks here? Is there any specific projects you've identified?
There are not specific projects identified for these funds. As I said, the, the fact base of the draft PED bike plan had something like $20 million of, of program needs identified. What we're looking at here is about $2 million. So the idea would be to come back to council for specific project approval.
Other council members?
If I could just take the opportunity to thank Paul for his work on this, he really has provided tremendous support for, I think, our council members who attend NVTA and NPTC and, and going out to get these funds for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't believe I've opened this item up for public comment yet, so any members of the public that wish to address this item? Not seeing any and I don't believe that we received any written comments either.
Is there a number of public anywhere?
And as I.
You're just so excited to be here.
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, I, I think that, that this is an example of regional cooperation, that the city is each year giving some degree, some amount of the NVTA funding. So it's taken some work to get there and Paul has been very helpful from a staff level. Thanks.
Thank you. And as I've mentioned before, since this does involve some government funds, my name shouldn't be associated with anything that goes to the federal government, nor would I be representing the city in, in those issues. So if we can have the roll call, please.
On TR 13 24, Ms. Berry?
24 or 27?
I'm sorry, 27, excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Callen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Tarter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item before you, council, TR 13 dash 24, ordinance to amend the budget of expenditures and revenues, prepping funds for the fiscal year 2014, general fund and capital improvement project fund, and to establish the budget of the special transportation fund and its capital improvement program. On first reading. Thank you.
These items before you for first reading. There were, there was one change that was made. We had some unspent money from a catch grant that the council had authorized. The money was dispersed, but the grantees were unable to spend it, so that's. The money was dispersed, but the grantees were unable to spend it, so that's been added to your carry flow. It's $7,522.
Is it?
It's in there.
It's in there. Anything?
Should be redlined. You'll find it on line 20. You'll see that it changes from 450 to 457, 62. If you go to...
Line 85.
Line 47.
47.
Yes, and line 85 explains it.
Ah, here we are.
Any questions for staff on this? If I can get a motion and open it up for public comment?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve TR-13-24 on first reading, schedule second reading and public hearing for October 7, 2013, and advertise the same according to law.
Thank you. If I can get a second? It's Mr. Kalen on the second. Any public comments on this item?
No.
I'm going to go ahead and, and I don't believe we've had any written comments on this. I'd like to open or close this item up for public comment, and if I can ask for the roll call.
Mr., I'm sorry, did we miss a chance for questions?
We can, yes, but I'm happy to...
So, this is on the appropriations item, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just wondered if, are we going to go forward with the item at number 53?
50, can you give us a line number?
The lighter timing mechanism?
Just, I hate to be the one to, you know, bring up the recurring question, but every time we've talked about this up to now, we've wondered whether we were really going to go forward with this. Are we, in fact, going to go forward with it?
Yep, well, from, from, I think that Mr. Pepe and I both had a recollection that we don't remember that we had said that this was important, but in, in point of fact, $1,500 in a several hundred thousand dollar amendment, I think is not worth holding up the show, and if staff feels that this is a critical expenditure, then I'm not going to stand in staff's way.
We think it would be helpful for the public to have a visual cue as they're speaking, and so that's what it is intended for. The legislative budget is down to a Nats eyelash, and so that is why we, if we were to make this expenditure, it would need to come out of the council contingency line item. But we do think it, you know, it's, when you're up here speaking, it's helpful to just have a visual cue as to where you are in terms of the council standard rule of three minutes. That's the intent.
And I think it would also help council members in tracking their time. Council rules may change next go-around, and the next council may want certain rules about being more stringent than this council or less stringent, but it would also serve that, that notion, and I would, I think Kathy's got a difficult enough job as it is, and this would also lessen the burden of tracking speaker times and also council member times as well.
It'll, that will depend on the system.
Well, Kathy's going to be working on which system we procure, so I would say that we give a lot of leeway to Kathy on, on following the appropriate Virginia procurement laws, of course, that we defer to her on what system we ultimately purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I know, let me just ask the city clerk, since she's been involved in the timing of speakers, is this something that you think we should have and that other clerks have?
I did do a poll out to my fellow clerks around the state. Not too many of them responded that they do have systems. Some said they wish they had. It just depends on, on the jurisdiction. I think the way we're set up here, I'm not sure that we're set up for that technology to be installed easily, but, you know, I think we just, it's one of these, I have to look online. It doesn't mean anything to me when I look at these things online to understand whether it's going to fit in council chambers, whether it's going to be some tiny little thing that's going to be hanging off the front. Some of them would have to sit here, and I will have to be hitting things up here, which will make it even more difficult. I have enough trouble trying to go back and forth on granite cuss and deal with paper and stuff like that. But, you know, I think I just, if you want to have it, we'll get it for you.
Nobody seems to want to claim ownership of this.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? It sounds like Kathy, you, you need to figure out if we can even find a feasible system?
I need to find something that I think is, and I, I'm going to have to have other eyes look at it, to see that technologically is going to work for this, this situation right here, this building and this layout. So...
Right, and what I hear is that it would be useful to you in terms of managing the meetings as well as the mayor. Is that...
Perhaps.
Yeah, okay, well, and this is, I understand this to be a ceiling and not a floor.
It probably won't be any more of a problem than, you know, me hitting the timer here, so...
Make sure if we're going to tear down a building...
I, I will...
You know, last night I was at a candidate event, and somebody downloaded this awesome timer app on their iPhone, that when three minutes went off, it was like foghorn, leghorn, you know? And I don't think that cost anything, so, I don't know, I'm just saying, maybe technology is...
Unbelievable.
Mr. Kalen?
Are we talking about a $1,500 expenditure here?
Yeah.
You know, maybe we could have a small localized explosion if people go over to...
Well, it is a big deal. The council contingency is 7,500, so this is actually, this is like 25% of your contingency fund, so...
I'm not for that.
Why don't we, why don't we, we can strike it and...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we just leave it in so it doesn't have to come back? And if Kathy can't find a system that she thinks is workable or for this amount, then, then we'll, then we'll do another omnibus, as we all do.
It's unreal.
So, so at least she's authorized to look at it.
The council iPad.
All right. I don't think I have, I've got a motion on this yet.
I, didn't I move it?
Did, was this moved? It was, sorry. I think we were on public comments, and then we had a question that came up. Any public comments on this item? And I don't believe we've gotten any written comments. I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment and ask for the roll call.
On TR-13-24 on first reading, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item before you, TR-13-25, Orders to amend Article 9 Motel Tax or Transience of Chapter 40 Taxation by Men in Code, Section 40-182, levied amount.
Okay, council, is requested to increase the city's tax on transient occupancy from 5% to 7% effective July 1, 2013. It's being requested so that we are in compliance, and our code matches the state code, as most of you should know. HB 2313 was passed effective July 1 by the State Assembly, and they raised the transient occupancy tax for Northern Virginia to 7%. So, we are just modifying our code to be in compliance.
All right, any questions for staff?
Who gets this money? Does it all go to the state, or do we get any of this?
This is part of the transportation improvement bill. This was designed to raise revenues, as you recall, there's a 30-70 pot. 30% goes to localities to do projects that they want to do, 70% goes to a pot for Northern Virginia projects.
I got you, so we'll get 30% of this extra 2%, hopefully at the end of the day, presumably we made all the other requirements.
Yes.
I got you. Let me ask you, we're getting some new hotels online in the city, and the idea is that they'll be accretive to our bottom line, the city's bottom line. What is the total tax we charge on transient occupancy? Is there a local component in addition to the state component? In other words, do we charge a local transient occupancy tax, any kind of local hotel tax?
The 5% that's currently on the books is a local tax. The additional 2% is going to go strictly for transportation, and it's, that was enacted by the General Assembly. 5% is local.
So, 5% is local, we're going to keep the 5%, and the additional 2% is mandated by the state, of which we'll get 30% of that 2%?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And is, and the total amount of tax, like, you know, when you go to a hotel, when someone goes to a hotel in Falls Church, they're going to see 7% as tax. Is there anything else? I mean, normally, when I go to other places, it seems like there's, you know, a zillion percent of taxes. Is 7% the totality of the tax when you get a hotel bill here in Falls Church?
I'll need to get back with you on that, just to show...
Thank you.
Other questions? If I can get a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TR-13-25 on first reading, schedule public hearing and second reading for October 7, 2013, and advertise the same according to law.
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Okay.
That's Mr. Kalen on the second. I'd like to open this item up for public comment. No members of the public coming forward, and I don't believe we have any written comments. I'm going to go ahead and close this item up for public comment and ask for the roll call vote.
On first reading, TR-13-25, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. The next item before you are consent, under consent, you have appointments.
Ms. Barry?
Yes, I just wanted to, once again, mention that it's a pleasure to have this opportunity to thank the engaged and thoughtful citizens of Falls Church, who are willing to be a part of finding innovative solutions to a range of civic challenges. It was Mr. Duncan, and my pleasure to speak with Mr. Bouchau, Mr. Sharp, Mr. Anzalone, and we did not have an opportunity to talk to Linda Nebergall, but her, her reputation precedes her, and we know that she's going to be an excellent member of the Girls' Home Advisory Board, so we, we recommend this slate to the full council without reservation.
Thank you. If I can get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Smarter than me do it.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you, I move the consent agenda. Move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you.
See?
If I can get a second, please?
Second.
That's Mr. Duncan on the second.
Thank you. I don't know why it's so tough. On consent, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Kalen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Charter?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item before you is council member comments.
Any comments, council members?
Just a note about the two civic events this week. Wednesday night, the League and Vipas Candidates Debate, 7:30 here in Chambers, right? And Thursday night, the CBC Democrat/Republican, I forget who else is helping sponsor, has a water forum at the Legion Hall, also at 7:30. All have been noticed as special gatherings of public officials, so we can all attend and comment.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Two quick notes. I wanted to mention the passing of Tony Skirbo, who is a very active member of the veterans group here, and who did a lot nationally for the POW MIA movement, so his passing is noted, and it's a loss to our city and region. And I think that's, that's it. Thank you.
Other council members? One thing I wanted to just quickly report on is that the school board, council liaison group met just prior to this meeting and went over some of the financial data that was discussed at work session along with the bond resolution, some student enrollment numbers, and a brief discussion of where we're at with the revenue share agreement and next steps in that. I think that hits all the highlights for members over there.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one more thing. Over the weekend, a statewide candidate, Mark Obenshein, was in our city and was at the Eden Center, and to sort of just welcome him to the city generally, and he asked me what was important in Falls Church, and I said, well, number one, education, and could they change the composite formula to give us a fair share? And secondly, could, could he consider relaxing the Dillon Rule so we can govern ourselves more than we're permitted to under existing state law? So, I wanted you to know that it was not in a partisan capacity, and I've had an opportunity to greet other visiting candidates statewide, and thought this would be an opportunity to explain what it is we'd really like to see if they were elected. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Other council members? I believe we are on to draft minutes. Any comments or edits on the September 9 set?
I have...
September 9.
September 9, 2013.
We have two, we have July 22 and September 9.
Yeah, we have two sets.
We have no changes.
How about on the, well, why don't we vote each one? If I can get a motion on the September 9 set?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the minutes of the September 9 meeting as presented.
If I can get a second? That's Mr. Vice Mayor Snyder on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? The ayes have it. There's one abstention by Mr. Pepe.
Actually, two. I'm sorry.
Who were the abstentions?
Pepe and Carter.
Mr. Carter, actually, oh, yes, you were both absent. Sorry.
Mr. Carter, you were.
I thought you were. Here.
All right. And July 22nd?
Any edits on the 22nd?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On line 354, Kathy, Mr. Duncan said, "He thee..."
He thee.
He thee. He thee did not mean to say that. If he did, said "the" arguments on both sides.
Got it.
That's all, thanks.
Thank you.
If I can get a motion on the July 22nd?
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the minutes of July 22nd. That's corrected.
Sorry, go get a second. That's Mr. Vice Mayor Snyder on the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Those are adopted as well.
Thank you.
And then we've got one closed item, closed agenda item, when we...
What about the 9/23? I have 9/23. Approval of minutes?
No, September 9, 20, no.
Well, this is September 9. I did have a comment on that. I missed, I was waiting for the, the meeting date, and it was, has September 9. May I make a comment on that?
Yeah, please.
Just, it's just for the clarification on 4/79.
Do you need an edit?
I'm afraid so.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
It's, and it's basically right, because Mr. Kalen asked if during the period, council was discussing the change, they could assume that the buy right option was still in place. That's pretty much correct. But I think why, it says here, Mr. Shields said the only application before the city was for a five-story SE project. That's correct, but I think what you said was there was no application pending for a buy right.
That's correct.
That's slightly different than what's here.
Line four, or 81?
Because the five story is true, but more importantly, there was no application.
So, that, that language is missing?
Yeah.
Can we just add that?
So, I think what's missing is, and there is no buy right application pending.
Uh huh.
Is that right, Mr. Shields?
That's correct.
John, what do we need to do? Given that this was already voted on?
Sorry about that.
Yeah, this minute was, yes, we had the last minute change after the vote on the...
The clerk can make edits.[1755.13] The clerk can make edits.
I think what you, what the city council needs to do is, there needs to be a motion to reconsider the vote that just passed, and a second, and then you can reopen.
Okay, if I can have a motion to reconsider that set of minutes, please?
So moved.
If I can get a second?
Second.
Thanks. Can I do it as, it doesn't need to be roll called, does it? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Yeah, two abstentions. Now, if I can have a motion for the minutes as amended?
Should I try again?
Mr. Kalin?
I vote that we approve the amended. Do I have to read the language?
Yes.
You could just, you just approve them as amended.
Approve this, approve as amended.
Thank you. If I can get a second? Vice Mayor Snyder? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That's Ron and Dave abstaining. That takes us through our business agenda. When we, we are going, we're going to go into closed session, and when we come out, all we're going to be doing is moving to adjourn. I don't believe we're going to be conducting any other business matters. Upon a motion made by council member...
Barry.
And seconded by council member...
Snyder.
That's Snyder. And passed by a voice vote of city council, council went into closed session pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, discussion consideration of promotions, performance, demotions, salary, discipline, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, annual evaluation of city managers, city attorney, and city clerk. Mayor Baruch, yes. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Barry?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalin?
Yes.
Councilmember Pepe? Councilmember Tarter? And we're going to go out at 9:27.
9:27.
Okay. Why don't we just step in the hall?